Okay, notice of the, of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, March 21st, 2019, beginning at 7:00 PM or slightly after, in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. First order business is call to order. Second is communication from the public and committee liaisons. To comply with the provision of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects be placed on a later, regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Before I may, I'll ask if there's anyone who wants to speak. I wanted to say we're gonna try to do something a little different tonight. We have a couple of items that are, might invite public discussion specifically on those. So, I was gonna propose we break the meeting up to allow public discussion or public comments on each of the items as they come up. If no one has objection, we'll go forward on that. So, having said that, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on items that are not on the agenda today, but on other items for future consideration by the Planning and Zoning Commission? Lot of discussion and no response. Good. The next item of business is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner or citizen so requests, in which case the item would be moved from the consent agenda and considered separately. The only thing on the consent agenda is minutes from the March 4th, 2019, regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Most disapprove.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor? See it carries unanimously. Action items, according to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure R 2010-09, all actions of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. The next item is the consideration and possible action regarding a one-time, six-month extension for the following preliminary plants. Georgetown Section 1, Georgetown Section 2, and Georgetown Boulevard Street Dedication Phase 2. Aubrey, do you wanna bring us up to speed on what's going on with Georgetown?
Yes, sir. We approved these preliminary plots, these three of them back in October. Preliminary plot approval is good for six months. Um... Sorry. Are we good? Okay. Sorry. Okay. We approved these three preliminary plats back in October. The, we do, the subdivision ordinance does allow for a one-time, six-month extension if the applicant submits something in writing and has reasons for their request. They are still working on some funding for the development, so they are requesting a six-month extension.
Do I have a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Okay. You have a motion and a second. Dick, you have any questions?
I don't.
Eric? Brett? Marcus? Lisa? Okay. This is a one-time only, and if they fail to meet it in six months from now, then they'd have to go back through the whole process.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If there's no other comments, we'll vote. All those in favor? Opposed? I see it carries unanimously. Item five. Consideration and possible action regarding a zone classification change from single-family residential to planned unit development for a residential development Avalon at Friendswood, being 115.998 acres, located along the future Friendswood Lake Boulevard between West Ranch and Friendswood Lake subdivision, consisting of the following tracts, 87.774 acres, more or less, being a portion of a called 96.944 acre tract in the Mary Fabro survey, abstract number 69, in Galveston County, Friendswood, Texas, save and except for a 9.17 acre portion of the same tract and 28.224 acres of land, more or less being a portion of a called 194.21 acre tract, described in tract A as conveyed to Yellowstone Hill Country Ranching LLC, Galveston County, Friendswood, Texas. This item was tabled on March 4th, 2019. Do I have a motion to remove it from the table?
Motion to remove.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Staff? Aubrey, you wanna describe what we're doing here, anything?
We need to take that vote first.
Oh, sorry. All those in favor?
Yeah.
And that's unanimous. Thank you. Aubrey, keep me out of trouble.
So, basically, I don't really have any new information. It's the same request, 206 lots. The development would be pending the extension of the Friendswood Lakes Boulevard. There's language in the PUD that would be attached to the ordinance, you know, clarifying that we would not record final plats until the Boulevard is extended for appropriate The PUD also did include, I believe, an extension in the length of cul-de-sacs that are typically allowed by the subdivision ordinance, and there are lot lines on the lakes that are gonna go all the way to the edge of the water, but we are gonna require a drainage easement for the maintenance of the berm around the detention pond.
Thank you. Is the applicant here today? Would you like to speak?
Catherine Parker with Meta Planning and Design, and went through everything with you guys last time, so I won't be repetitive unless you have any questions, but I did bring an update on my presentation. One of the things that had been discussed at the last meeting was other similar developments that they've done in other areas of Houston, and so we went out and took some photos of Avalon at Riverstone and wanted to show those to you. It kind of helps illustrate the lake lots with the lot going straight to the water and some of the other amenities that we mentioned. So, if you go through, I think it's after... There you go. So, this is Avalon at Riverstones. You can see again the gated community entrance. Here are a couple of the streetscape, large homes, lots of landscaping, and then we start to show you the lakes, and in the bottom photo, you can see how the lots go straight to the water's edge, and it allows that unobstructed view for the residents. And if you could go to the next slide, this shows better of the lakes themselves, landscaping along them, some of the different conditions that they have. Some of the lots do have fencing on the rear of them, some of them are open. And then just a photo, another photo of the homes, similar to what we had last time, but just wanted to kind of help illustrate for you what the final product would look like and how some of the unique characteristics that we're proposing here, how they function in other areas. So, that's the main thing I wanted to add this time around, but otherwise, you know, all the information's still the same. And I know staff put together a chart. Is that what you sent me? Do they have all that?
Yes.
But basically comparing some of the adjacent properties like West Ranch and then other ones within the area, and the densities within those and the lot sizes within those. And, you know, in my review of it, one of the things I wanted to point out is, as far as the density goes, we're pretty in line on the overall density of the development with what's done even in Friendswood Lakes and Sterling Creek that have all the 90-foot lots. But we also have a higher open space, green space area, which is one of the things we really talked about last time, and with the lakes and that being the key focus of this development and this type of product, we're still at 36 percent. So, we're a comparable density at 1.8 and 36 percent green space, open space. So, we're maintaining that intent of keeping the density down within Friendswood, but also amenitizing the development and providing the unique product that Avalon has throughout the area. So, those are just kind of the main points, but I'm available if there's any questions or anything you guys would like me to go over again.
Thank you. At the beginning of the meeting, I said there'd be an opportunity for public to comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment either for or against this application? Seeing none, then I'll go on to, I think Brett, you were the one who said take this off the table.
Okay, so I go first?
I think you go first.
Okay. I'm gonna be in support of a positive recommendation to council for this development for primarily two reasons. The reason we have 90-foot requirements in Friendswood, Texas...
Richard.
Because, you know, as you just said...
I'm sorry. Well, we need to do a motion and a second, and then discussion. I apologize.
Oh, okay. We had a motion, take it off the table. We didn't have a motion to... Okay, so I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
That way, you still get to go first. Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dick.
Okay.
Sorry. Thank you. Keep me out of trouble.
Thank you.
Somebody needs to.
As I said, I'm gonna be in support of this development of positive recommendation to council for primarily two reasons. As I said, 90-foot lots are the standard for Friendswood and has served Friendswood very well the past decade, and it will continue to serve Friendswood very well. That is the standard in Friendswood, Texas, 90-foot lots. And the primary reason for that is to, as you just mentioned, to keep the density down. That's the reasoning, that's the main reasoning behind the ordinance, the spirit of law, so to speak. And in my mind, I think Avalon is adhering to that spirit of law by coming in with lower density. SFR allows for 2.7 dwellings per acre for coming at 1.8. So, they're gonna have less density if they were putting all 90-foot lots, if they chose to go that route. They also are gonna have more green or probably more water space, more open space. Streets will be privatized. They will be built to city Friendswood standards, but the streets will be private. So, I think that's three good trade-offs in allowing Avalon to move forward with this project. We're getting more green space, private streets, and less density if this were to be a typical SFR zoning. The other reason I'm in support of this is mainly for market conditions. I'm seeing on the rental side, and it's currently on the sale side too, the United States is going through a fundamental transformational housing shift. We got about 3 million baby boomers going into the retirement market every year, and that's gonna continue for the next 20 years. So, we're gonna have over 60 million baby boomers in the country going into retirement, and a lot of them are gonna downsize. So, they're gonna be giving up their big homes, their big lots, because they wanna downsize, and they'll be dumping a lot of that into the inventory. On the other end of the demographic spectrum, you got the millennials, who have a totally different mindset than many of us, our generation. They don't want the big houses and big lots either. So, you got your two largest segment of your population, the baby boomers, the millennials, who don't want big houses and big lots. So, the free market is telling us, don't stop the big lots, but kind of pump the brakes on them. We don't need that much inventory. So, I think it serves the city well to kind of watch this and balance it out, and if we don't, if we insist on going against the free market, forcing builders and developer to do these big homes and big lots, by a decade, we're gonna have a lot of empty big homes and big lots in Friendswood, Texas. So, I'm in support of this.
Thank you, Brett. Dick?
Can't say it much better than it really. I think a couple things. I intend to vote for this recommendation to council in the affirmative as well. I think...
Microphone.
Oh, sorry. I think one of the, one of the other things over and above what was just mentioned is that the builder has a strong track record in the Houston area of building quality homes that people want, and I think that it will serve Friendswood well for all these reasons.
Eric?
I have a question for the builder. Could you, could you, the plan on showing your layout, could you just discuss the access to the lakes, which are, I think you consider a big selling point?
Could you go back a little bit?
And talk about access? Because it looks like only about 40 of your homes can actually access it. And can you talk about why you are limiting people to get around the lakes?
So, the element that is unique about these lake lots is that it does allow the homes that are along the lake to have direct access to it. There is access and viewpoints, though, for the whole development, especially on the south. If you look, when you come in the main entrance, there's the view of the lake, and then there's the open space right along it on the entry road, so there would be access there. And then again, on the north, that lake, there's a couple areas where there would be access. So, people can still have the...
I see one when you come in.
If you, yeah, right when you come in, and then if you look just straight across the lake, it says OS, that's open space, and so that's another half acre right there, that there's another opportunity for, yeah, thank you. That that allows for people to be able to at least view it, and there will be a minute landscaping and that type of thing. So, people will still be able to access it. And then just the way that the lots and the homes are designed, the view of it will be, you'll see the whole lake through, through the neighborhood as you're going past those points, but it's just for the amenity of that product.
So, could you talk about any other amenities other than the lakes?
Well, there's gonna be, I mean, all of the green space and open space areas are gonna be landscaped, but there's, like I said, there's the half acre or .4 acre park area right there at the northern side of that, that lake on the north. And then on the south, again, we've got an open space area. Could you scroll down a little bit, Aubrey? Down on the south. So, there's, there's open space areas that we're trying to break up throughout the development.
And on the south side, what is gonna be north of the entranceway?
North of...
Yeah, the, your entrance on this, the developments on the south side of Friendswood Lakes.
Yes.
And you've got the entranceway. What is gonna be to the north of, excuse me, to the west of that?
Oh, future development. It's not certain yet what that may be.
And what is that zone today?
I believe it's the same residential zone as what...
Okay. Does that extend all the way to Sterling Creek?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay. Nobody has ownership of that yet? You don't, apparently.
My client does not own that at this time, no.
I think I'm taking a little different track than the two previous commissioners. I'm just looking at the data and seeing the way we're drifting now, and I look at the two positive and done, and we went from homes with lots 70 or less from 40 percent to 70 percent to now 80 percent. So, that bothers me. I'm not sure I agree that that's the way we should go. So, that's where I stand.
Well, and if I could just point out one, one big difference between what we're proposing and what some of those other couple, West Ranch, which is immediately to the east of it, and then also Friendswood Trails. Both of those have even smaller lots. They've got 55-foot lots, and looking at the chart, they've got 40, around 40 percent under 70-foot lots in both of those developments, and we've only got 21 percent. So, we do have more in like the 70 to 80-foot range, but we have far less in the lower, and that's what kind of helps to keep our overall density down, because we are still trying to do, you know, it's not the small starter home 50-foot lots that some of these other developments, the markets required, but, so we, we're kind of trying to be a little bit in the middle, but again, keeping the overall density more compatible with what the intent of the...
And the only thing, other thing I'd say is Friendswood Lakes is 90-foot lots, and Sterling Lakes is 90-foot lots as well, and they're two yards to your west.
Right. And we're a comparable density to both of those. We're at 1.8 and they're 1.6, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. I'll let you go last, Joe, catch up. Marcus, you got anything?
No, I think you guys, yeah, I do have one thing. So, I, one thing I do wanna point out is that when you look at the general purposes and you put that as part of the attachment, is that a discriminator that you put this through, or is that up for interpretation for us? This is the yellow box that you gave us for the PUD general purposes.
That is out, it's copied from the zoning ordinance.
Right. So, I think that's another thing to add. When I go through and screen this development against that PUD general purpose, I do think it fits a good majority, if not, if not all of it, maybe with the exception of one or two. So, I did wanna point that out as well. And then just for clarification, so you have the 29 roughly acre lake/detention pond plus the 10-acre detention pond. That was part of your density calculation?
Of the overall density of the entire tract, yes.
Okay. So, if you took those out, I'm assuming you would still be below the density requirements of 2.7 or 2 whatever it was?
It's possible. I haven't done that calculation.
Okay. All right. I'm good, thank you.
Sally? Lisa? Sally, Lisa?
No wonder I wouldn't...
Yeah, right. Sorry, Lisa.
The question I have is, can you tell me the, the price range of your homes?
I don't have that information right now. We're, I mean, we're focused on the land planning, but I'm, I'm not involved in the price point discussion. I mean, I can, I can tell you it's likely to be comparable to what the other developments are, but I don't know what that base is at this time.
So, you don't know what the other developments run?
Well, like I said, like as far as my role in this, I'm not involved in the pricing of that, so, of the price point. We're, we're focused on the development of the land, so I can't, I don't wanna answer anything that may not be accurate.
Lisa, I went on the Seaco Ranch website, and their home started $400,000, one of them there. That helps.
That was where I was guessing, that it would start there and go up, but...
I would say it's safe to assume it'll be comparable to other Avalon products in the area.
That's why I...
Joe?
Okay, thank you. My apologies for being late. I woke up about 1 o'clock in the morning in London, and I got here as fast, I got here as fast as I could.
I think you win for the longest commute.
Well, yeah, I did win that one. My apologies for, for being late, sorry. You know, I've heard actually a lot of the same comments that I have. I still struggle, as Commissioner Gunther does a little bit, that, you know, at 1.8 density, that you're including the lakes, and if the lakes had trails, like many of the other subdivisions of Taylor Morrison, that I went on the Taylor Morrison website, nine hours on a plane gives you lots of time to look at them. You know, and there's lots of, lots of amenities, but to me, this particular subdivision, what I struggle with is it doesn't give everyone those same amenities. There's some, there's some peek-a-boo views of, of the lakes that are concerning to me, and so I, I struggle with that density number, I think is misleading a little bit, only because it includes the lakes that aren't really accessible and there's not trails. So, I appreciate, you know, the explanations, and I, and there's a lot of good points up here, but I'm not, I'm, so far, I don't think this meets, meets the needs of Friendswood, and I think we could do better somehow on this.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but the density calculations on all of them were based on overall acreage, correct?
I believe they were all...
So, all, on this chart, it would all be based on including any amenities?
I think that, yeah, they were all done the same way.
So, it's apples for apples.
Well, it's, that's right. Fair, but percentages, and it could be a little misleading. I think this is a 26 acre lake, is that correct? 27 acre lake out of a total...
A portion of the 29 acres.
Okay. I was just looking at your, your piece of paper that, okay, so it's total of what? Sorry.
The whole lake is 29 acres, only a portion of that's within the property.
I see. I see. Okay. But out of, but out of the 116 acres of total development, is that correct?
Yeah, that's...
27.
So, the 27 fits in, matches up with that.
Yes.
So, my concern a little bit is that I'm not sure it's apples to apples on this, is that it's such a large percentage of your particular subdivision or PUD versus other PUDs. But, okay. Thank you very much. I have no further questions. Thank you.
One of the things about going last is pretty much all the clever things that I had thought of have been already said. I find myself more in sympathy with Commissioner Gunther and, and Joe here about the fact that we have, we've broken the 90-foot barrier a couple of times, most recently on Friendswood Trails. And Friendswood Trails, to do that, they put in 21,000 feet of trail system, they put in 15 pocket parks, they put in amenity ponds, they had amenity ponds like you have and several small parks. Like Commissioner Gunther pointed out, the pond, all green space is not the same. So, these ponds look to be private kind of lakes to the 20 percent of the owners that are gonna be on them, and, and the other 80 percent are gonna have, like Joe said, a peek-a-boo view of it, but not really access. I don't consider it the same as a, as a green space. It's more of a blue space, and it's kind of a restricted blue space. And so, I think we're working our way down to something that's, doesn't, doesn't compare favorably to West Ranch or Friendswood Trails. And so, my, my plan is to vote against the current configuration of what you've got here, generally for the reasons is that there is, there is nothing but the ponds, and the ponds are only available to a small percentage of the residents.
If I could just address a couple of those comments. One of the biggest reasons for the, not having the pocket parks and all those other factors, the trails, is simply the size of the development. I mean, those are much larger developments overall than what we've got here. We've got just, you know, 115 acres. So, there's not the room, nor is there the demand based on the population of what's gonna be within this development. So, what we've done is tried to provide areas throughout that will be available to, to the residents, small little pocket park areas throughout the, the project. But also, one of the things that's unique here is that because it is a gated community, it does have a different, more private desire within the project, you know? So, it's a gated community, it's only for these residents, and, you know, they're paying a premium to have their own view and access to the lake as opposed to a public one. It's, it's all part of the, the concept of the gated lake lot community that, that is Avalon. So, some of the reason for those, those differences is partially dictated just by the size of the property, and also just the, the need and desire of the type of project that we're trying to create here.
Well, I did take advantage of some of the things on the website that showed the Sugar Land, they had a nice YouTube of the Sugar Land development, looks very nice. They showed off their huge pool, access for the, the residents, and then showed happy people jumping into the pool and all that kind of thing. That wouldn't happen here, because, like I said, you have blue space that's accessible to 20 percent of the lots, so that's, that's kind of my thinking and, and how I'm, I'm viewing this one. So, having said that, are there any other, anybody else wanna say? Brett?
Yeah, just wanna, you mentioned this the last meeting. If y'all, I know you don't do 90-foot developments, but if you did one, how many homes could you put on this?
Just straight 90-foot. I believe the calculation, and I was, again, not taking into account detention, but just if we were to lot out the entire property at 90-foot lots, it would have been about 230, I believe.
230 homes, roughly.
Right.
So, this, this what kind of gets me. We're gonna hold the line on 90-foot lots, and the only reason we had that rule is to keep down density. So, if we force the developers to, you gotta do 90-foot lots, well, they're gonna put more, more homes on the ground than this development will. So, if we hold the line on 90-foot lots, we're gonna get 230, 235 homes. If we allow the developer to have a little flexibility, we get 206 homes. So, it seems like our, by forcing 90-foot lots, our, our end result is counter to our desired end result. So, we're getting more homes on the ground if we go 90-foot lots. If we allow the flexibility, we're getting less homes. So, that's, that just doesn't make sense to me, so I'm firmly in support.
I have one additional comment. So, it didn't come up tonight, but the, the current landowner was present last time and supportive of this as well. So, I think that's, it's certainly an important point that I wanted to bring up, that goes into my consideration, and I wanted to make sure that that was represented here, but don't let me put words in anyone else's mouth.
So, just to understand, I just wanna follow up on that. If you were to do all 90-foot lots, would you still have the lake?
No, that, that's what, like, if we're looking at just calculation and general density that we do based on lot sizes, if there was no lake and it was all 90-foot lots plus whatever, you know, detention requirements there would be, potentially up to 230 lots just based on...
So, that does not include a calculation for whatever detention would be required?
Right. But doing the lakes increases that detention number significantly. So, if we just did like ditches to meet the detention volume requirements, it would be, likely be more lots than what we're proposing.
I'd like to follow up a bit as well. If I didn't say, I didn't say it earlier, but I, in looking at the homes that Taylor Morrison builds, they build very nice homes, so, and a lot of the subdivisions were very, very nice subdivisions that, that I could see from a website. My concern with this one is not that we're gonna hold 90-foot lots, because I, I don't think I ever said that, but I think as the mix, I think there's pop, in my mind at least, a better mix. And so, that's just my only point, that I was, I wasn't really saying that we were gonna hold the line at 90-foot and that's it, because I think with the layout of this land and it, and it not being a huge subdivision, this might be a great opportunity with a planned unit development type zoning, but, but I'm just concerned about this particular one. But anyway, I wanted to say that, that, no, no disrespect for Taylor Morrison Homes, because they, they do look like very nice subdivisions, but any of the subdivisions I saw didn't look like this one. Again, it may just be I didn't find the right ones or something, but that, anyway, just a point.
Any more discussion from anyone? Don't wanna stifle discussion on this issue. Okay. So, we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Carries four to three.
We will forward that recommendation to City Council and... and this item will be on Council's agenda for April 1st for consideration, the first reading of the ordinance.
Okay, the next item is item number six. Consideration and possible action regarding proposed amendments to Appendix C, Zoning Ordinance, Section 8 N1, Geographic Limits, Regarding Proposed Amendments to the Established Boundary of the Downtown District. Aubrey, you want to remind us what this is all about?
Yes, sir. Let me get this. So this is a continuation of discussion of our downtown amendments. It started out with the Downtown District Subcommittee. We brought back some, the Subcommittee's recommendation to the remainder of the Commission mid-February. And then we workshopped this with City Council on March 4th to present them, you know, with what we were working on. And so now we're back. So it was a long list of items that we were proposing for the Downtown District amendment. So we've broken those down into five different agenda items. So this one is, this specific agenda item is regarding the proposed amendments to the boundary of the Downtown District. So the breakdown will allow us to consider each item individually as, you know, they're grouped together. So we did send out property owner notices to all the property owners within 200 feet of the area of the boundary that was being considered for change, to invite them to the meeting tonight, to inform them, you know, that this was being discussed. I think we, I got one phone call today, and she followed up with an email. I forwarded that to you, but I also provided pronouns of that email tonight. As far as, you know, those 200-foot notices, that's the only feedback that I got. Did you hear back from anybody else?
We, there was a couple of people that had come in and asked about it, but they didn't voice an opinion. They just wanted to come to the meeting.
Okay. So the process for all of these items, we workshopped with Council just to get their, you know, feedback, if any. I think it was new information for them, so I'm not sure that any, you know, there wasn't real strong opinions. But, so our process now would be to consider these items. And our votes on these items tonight would just be moving them forward to joint public hearing. So, or if it's after June, just do public hearings to possibly change these ordinances. So after the votes tonight, if, you know, if everything passes and we want to move them forward, then we'll do, you know, public hearings and then first and second readings with City Council to consider these changes.
So today's motion would be to approve or to recommend, or how does that work? Maybe I should be asking Mary.
They would be to approve.
Okay, okay.
Yes. Yeah.
Approving a recommendation, okay, fair enough. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this issue today? No, okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Joe?
You know, I think we have been discussing this in a number of different public meetings for quite a while. I think I have nothing else to add. To the record.
You're talked out. Eric? Okay. Dick? Okay. Brett?
Well, I was going to have a lot to add, but since we're doing a public hearing, I will wait till the public hearing. I thought we were going to approve the council tonight, so I guess we're going to.
Yeah, to go back to council, it's got to be through, like, we have to form, like, we have to make our recommendation so that we can formalize that, advertise it, and then take action that way.
But I'm going to hold my comments till it counts.
Well, I guess so on the boundary.
Share them, anyway, all right.
On the.
We're going to do this all over again, correct?
Yes, yes, we are.
Including additional votes.
Right.
So I guess on this boundary change, is the motion to amend the boundary or to leave it as is?
Okay, I see. I see what you're saying now. We still got to kind of make a soft recommendation.
Yeah, this one still needs, this one needs a.
I would be very interested to hear if you have some comments.
Oh, well, I mean. I'm certainly not against expanding the Downtown District. I'm really not for doing it this way. Especially where encroaching to residential areas. I just, I just don't think we should go about that way. I think the PUD process is the way to go, or at least some type of plan in place. As you know, Rees Church, they came to us about eight months ago, and they met with fierce opposition on their zoning change. They pulled it, they went back and had a nice plan made up. They presented to the neighbors, and the neighbors were all for it. So I think expanding the boundaries or doing zoning changes without knowing what's going there at all, that encroaches pretty significantly into residential areas, that's, that gets me a little heartburn. But we'll talk this a lot bit more. So that's my general leanings right now. I don't think we should expand it, but after the public hearing stuff, I reserve the right to change my mind.
I think I heard that we need to have the motion kind of cleaned up to say it's a motion to recommend that we do this, and then we each know which way we're voting when we vote. Is that fair, Mary Kay?
Yes.
Okay, can I put a words in your mouth for that motion?
Let me make a comment right here, and it's just really just a point of clarification. So for this particular expansion, our change in the boundary, I don't see anything in the report and our documentation tonight that aligns to, and I hope it's because it's something that I'm mistaken. When I look at the minutes from last, I guess the fourth when we met, it talked about a Subcommittee recommendation. Was that Subcommittee recommendation this topic for the neighborhood?
So, yes, the spread, there was a spreadsheet that we gave that had the Subcommittee recommendations. And the Subcommittee's recommendation on this particular item was to not change the boundary.
Right, and I.
That's right.
I just want to make sure that we don't lose that history.
Good point. Right.
I guess I'll just dispute that. That's not how I remember. I don't think we ever took a vote as a Subcommittee or came up with a consensus of a recommendation. I don't, I don't remember doing that.
Okay, I'm glad you're bringing that up, because then I think we might need to amend the minutes from the fourth.
But I may have misremembered.
Well, when we did the, when we built the spreadsheet, that we had the recommendations column in the far right-hand column, and it was, we didn't recommend changing that. So, but there has been a lot of discussion since we put this spreadsheet together. So there may have been changed opinions.
Then that may be what it is.
Yeah.
I do think it was a consensus, not a formal vote. It was kind of a, we were talking about it and kind of opposed to it.
There was a point in time that there was a consensus, then the more discussion, it got grayer.
And so honestly, to move this forward, I think we rewrite the ordinance to change the boundary.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, so that.
We can have a motion to say leave it alone, because that's static.
What do you vote on?
So the motion needs to be, we're proposing, the recommendation would be to change the boundary.
I'll amend my motion to recommend that we expand the Downtown District boundary to include, and that's where I'm going to struggle, but what's the property's address?
110 Whispering Pines.
Thank you.
You move to approve the boundary change?
It's clarifying what the vote is.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yes, I.
If you vote yes, you're for the, you're for expanding the boundary. And if you vote no, you're opposed to expanding the boundary. Okay, so I think we left it with you, Marcus.
Eric was the second, so.
Second, but I've got to admit, I've got to admit, I'm very confused now. Because this is Whispering.
Whispering Pines, right.
Didn't we all agree that we're going to make that change?
It is on the agenda for items, and we need to have a yes, no. We may all agree that we don't want to do that, but we need to formally say that.
I honestly don't know where we are right now. Where we left it, I think, in the last meeting was to lose the discussion.
Yeah.
We never have voted on this.
We're going to vote on all of the items that were brought up, and this is just the first one.
This just seems backwards to me. We're voting on something prior to a public hearing.
This isn't, this isn't a formal recommendation.
Okay.
This is just to, just give us guidance on where to go and how to write these, or, yeah, a position.
They need a position in order to vote against it or support it.
Yeah, yeah, we got a second. Thank you. Okay, so I'm not sure where we are on comments. I think we've gone, is everybody still good over here? Eric?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Well, let me just say in response to something Brett said that triggered a thought, is that we've said all along that the property owners wish, are desiring or seem to desire to develop this property. They're two pieces of property that are owned by one person or one family, that they're going to view, develop it as commercial. And that whether we change the boundary or not, it could, if they so desire it, still end up being commercial property, back to encroaching upon, you know, the residential areas. I think it's going to do that, could do that either way, whether we vote to expand the boundary or not.
Yes.
What's it, what is it currently zoned?
Yeah, there's two tracks, both zone single-family. One's in the boundary, one's outside the boundary.
Right.
So if we move the boundary, it doesn't change the zoning of properties. They still have to go through a rezoning from residential to commercial. So this will go through two public scrutiny processes.
What this would allow them to do is to zone both properties Downtown District.
Right.
And use that zoning for both properties. If they don't do this, they would have to do either a PUD, as Brett said, or they would have to stay with commercial, CSC.
And the recommendation of the Subcommittee was not to change the boundary, right?
Kind of a consensus.
According to the minutes, that we can amend the minutes if we don't think that was the position. But the spreadsheet that was presented on March 4th.
At the time the spreadsheet was developed, it was no.
I agree with that.
Okay.
That's correct.
I hope we've confused everybody.
Marcus, you got anything else?
No.
Lisa?
I think we've all covered all the questions.
Right.
Yeah, the way I kind of view it is the same as I think most of the people here, that the property owners want to have the option to perhaps change it to Downtown District. They don't have a plan yet. They're just kind of leaving everything open. So they're saying it would be inconvenient for them to do a PUD. So they'd rather have the city create a whole new area. That would be something new that we'd have to have. It's an area that can be zoned Downtown District, but it's not subject to many of the Downtown District provisos. To me, I intend to vote against this. I don't think this is a proper approach forward, so. Having said that, are we ready to vote? Any more comments? All in favor? All opposed? Two to five, or two to, yeah, it does not pass. Five to two. Number seven. Consideration and possible action regarding proposed amendments to Appendix C, Zoning Ordinance, Section 8F, Off-Street Parking and Loading Regulations, to relocate Downtown District-related language to Section 8.N.3 Parking, and amendments to reduce the head-in parking requirement from 400 feet to 75 feet, including minor grammatical corrections. Aubrey, I guess when it says 400 feet, it means 400 feet away from the major thoroughfare?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So the current requirement on this was, we allow head-in parking or on-street parking in the Downtown, but the distance requirement right now is 400 feet from 518. So we, the proposal is to reduce that to 75 feet. And so this one, we just isolated this as a standalone item as well.
Losing our public, but is there anyone from the public that would like to speak about this? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
You have a second? I have a motion and a second. Brett, you want to say anything on this?
Nothing.
Joe?
I have nothing to add.
We'll break it up a little this time. Lisa, you're next. Anything?
Thoroughfare is not spelled correctly, but that's the only.
Catch. Marcus?
Nothing for me.
Who does get it? Dick? Eric? I don't have anything to speak on this either, so I think we're ready to vote. All in favor of approving this? It's supposed to be unanimous. And we're on to number eight. Consideration and possible action regarding proposed amendments to Appendix C, Zoning Ordinance, Section 7I, and Section 8.N.4, to allow cement fiber board installed as lap siding in the Downtown District. Section 8.N.4 to change the penetration requirements in the Downtown District DD, and Section 8.N.4 to restate that service laterals must be installed underground, prohibit garage bay doors from fronting on FM 518 in certain situations, limit exterior building colors to earth tone colors, require that screening materials match the main structure, and add a reference to dumpster screening requirements, including minor grammatical corrections. Aubrey?
So this is just another group of the changes that we've discussed. I think that. So I don't really have anything to add to that.
Okay, we've kind of talked about this before, and so it's kind of filling in the blanks if there are any. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Lisa, thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Marcus.
Sure.
So, discussion. Lisa?
Nothing really new. I'm in favor of the changes.
No comment?
Joe?
We spent a lot of time as a Subcommittee discussing this, and then I think we've talked about it in our work session as well. So this is the culmination. I just want to put it on the record that it's a culmination of a lot of work, a lot of consideration, but nothing past that.
Yeah, I echo what Joe said. It's kind of a hodgepodge of different items. We've talked about them before, so it's clear to us. It may not be clear to somebody looking at it for the first time. But I think each of these things are things that will improve our ordinance. Having said that, we ready to vote? All those in favor? And all opposed? And so it passes unanimously. Number nine. Consideration and possible action regarding proposed amendments to Appendix C, Zoning Ordinance, Section 8.N.8, Adjacent Property Buffer Maintenance and Installation, Duplicating Requirements or Buffering from Section I II, Perimeter Landscaping and Screening, and Amendments to Section 8.N.3 Parking, Duplicating Requirements for Parking from Section I II(c), Off-Street Parking, Landscaping, and Relocating Language, PUD Modification from Section 8.H, Modification of Standards Proposed Within a PUD to Section 7.J, PUD Planned and Unit Development, General Purpose and Descriptions, Including Minor Grammatical Corrections. Aubrey, why don't you? What? Oh, really? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Aubrey?
Again, this is just breaking down those, the items that we've been discussing. And it's, this is the staff cleanup section. None of this is new. It's just relocating or duplicating language.
And any comments? No comments? Okay, we did look through these individually in the Subcommittee and tried to make sure that they were all good. We all felt pretty clean about them. They're just cleanup motion items, so. With that, all those in favor? All opposed? Passes unanimously. Number 10. Consideration and possible actions regarding proposed amendments to Appendix A, Sign Ordinance, Section 9, Prohibited Signs, to prohibit LED storefront lights. Do I need a motion? storefront, storefront lights. Do I need a motion? Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Aubrey, can you explain this one?
Um, yes, this was just the change, it's actually in the sign ordinance, to prohibit LED storefront lighting, except, there was an exception for November 15th to January 15th for holiday lighting. And then it also did make the ordinance, well, when we write the ordinance, we would make it effective immediately, and then also not allow those that are already there to exist. We would require all of them to be removed within like 90, 60 or 90 days.
Yeah.
I thought it was 120, but, okay.
We could just send letters to the businesses that had them and basically let them know that they had a period of time to remove them.
And, and within the downtown district only is the proposal for now.
Got it. Um, comments? Anyone?
Yeah, I do. I have a, I have a little bit of trouble with this one, mainly because with the neon signs or, or even the LED signs, these people have already invested in those, whether it's a big investment or not. And so I, I have a problem with not grandfathering what they've already done. So I, I, I don't think I'll be voting in favor of this particular one, for, for that reason, that you're, you're coming back on something that they've had in place and saying, "No, now I've decided you can't do that." I just feel like it's wrong to do that.
Marcus, thank you. Joe?
No, I think we, we, again, this, this is another item that we've discussed several times, but for the record, I think it does absolutely, this, this kind of lighting that we're trying to address and other cities have tried to address, does take away from the look and feel of friends with the downtown district especially, that, that we're trying to, to put in place here. So, I, I, so far, I support it.
Right?
I'm in support of it.
I support it.
When we talked about this, I think we decided that the cost of the lighting was fairly minor, and so in general, I agree with what Lisa had said, that, that you don't take somebody who's already invested and then afterwards write a rule that takes them, takes away their ability to, to spend their money wisely. However, in this case, it's a, it's a fairly modest investment, and with the delay, and I thought it was 120 days, but it may have been 60 or 90.
It was 90.
90 days?
Yes.
I, I still am, am going to support this myself. So if there's no more comments, all, all in favor? All opposed? Carrie, six to one.
Okay.
Number 11, discussion regarding the annual review of the permitted use table and considerations of added NAICS use number 6239, other residential care facilities to the table. This is a discussion item only, not a motion, or not a, not a vote for approval. Do I need a motion to discuss? No, okay. So Aubrey, you're up. Again.
Um, so, the zoning ordinance requires staff to review the NAICS code book. It's a reference book that's updated every five years. We updated to the 2017 version last year, so there's no, no need to update the reference code. It's still good for five years. There are also, we use that time to also go just review the permitted use table. Usually, like throughout the year, staff will make notes of, you know, when we, we did an overhaul on the permitted use table several, several years ago and expanded all the numbers out to a minimum of four numbers, just to have detailed, you know, as possible definitions. Some of the uses are expanded out more than that. It, they actually go out to six-digit codes. So, there is one use that's missing, and that's 6239, which is other residential care facilities. That did come to our attention because we had an inquiry for a residential property wanting to do like a 24-hour residential care for children. So, I don't have a recommendation from staff at this point. We're still looking into the particular request, and then we also, I mean, 6239 needs to be added to the table and considered as a whole, but if staff needs more time to bring something back to you, so.
Do I need a motion to discuss? Mary? Okay, Mary Kay?
No.
Okay, so we can just open discussion now? Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
Okay. Aubrey, just want to make sure, so if we, in adding the 6239, we would then, you would, would staff recommend what was permitted, what, what required a special use permit?
Yeah, so we'll do the table and add the 6239 in there, and then rec, you know, what needs a P and what needs an S and what just needs to be blank.
Right.
So, but like I said, we need, we need to consider it as a whole. If this is something that you all would like to kick over to the ordinance subcommittee, we can do that, or, you know, staff can take another stab at it and, or, you know, we, we're in the process of researching, like I said, the particular request and how it fits in, but 6239 needs to be added regardless.
Right, because it's just missing from the table.
Right.
Okay. So the question is, what level of review do we need for applicants who are trying to apply under 6239?
Yes.
So, adding this to the table would not de facto allow this resident to do what they're planning to do. It may require additional, whatever we decide when we put it in.
Correct.
Okay, I see.
Yes.
That's the recommendation that would come from staff.
Yeah.
And this is, just for clarity, this is for a care in a residential area?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Any other?
So, it's not for, it's not for nur, the, like the nursing homes and things like that, that we already, it's totally different. Okay.
Yeah, there is a, there is a protected class of uses for, like Alzheimer's. I did not get all my printouts off the printer, so. Go ahead.
Yeah, under, community homes are, are protected under the law, and they would include things like, um, let's see, persons with a disability means a person whose ability to care for himself or herself perform manual tasks, learn, walk, work, see, hear, speak, or breathe is substantially limited because the person has an orthopedic visual speech or hearing impairment, Alzheimer's disease, pre-senile dementia, cerebral palsy, epilepsy, muscular dystrophy, must, multiple sclerosis, these words are hard, cancer, heart disease, diabetes, and intestinal, oh, excuse me, this is really embarrassing, intellectual. Disability. Yeah, that's embarrassing too. Autism or mental illness. And when we get to this part, we can't restrict zoning because they have to be allowed in any residential zone. So, that's one area that's, that's real clear, but the, the one that Aubrey was mentioning is a little bit different than that, than those types.
So we have to allow someone who does, has those people, what, the list you, you just called out, if they were to have a dozen people as a commercial, is, is this saying that if some, if someone, family member has that problem, you can't throw them out of the neighborhood?
No.
That I understand, but-
So, this falls under our personal care facilities.
Right.
So if it's three or less-
Okay.
They're, they're permitted by Ri, in single-family residential zoning.
But it's limited to three, three people total?
Yes.
Okay.
Four or more.
State, state, state law allows up to six.
Okay, so you may need to-
Which, which one govern, well, that's what you need to research. Okay.
I, I don't need to get ahead of the horse.
At, so, at some point, the state requires a license. You still can't not allow them, but they, it's just a matter of whether or not they require a license-
Right.
-for certain categories. This is for childcare, 24-hour childcare, basically, and so it doesn't fall under that. It doesn't fall under our commercial daycares. It doesn't fall under in-home daycares because those are less than 24 hours. So, like I said, it's, it's kind of a new ballgame that we're trying to figure out.
And on what I was, I'm sorry, what I was mentioning, there are more further restrictions as far as, they have to be, be, could be operated by the Department of Aging. There, it's not just anybody. So I'll get, give you more information on that as we go further into discussions.
I do appreciate the heads up and, and kind of getting a feel for where we're going here and what's coming. It helps the little gray cells work on it.
When are you expected to give the, the person an answer?
Um, well, we'll probably, we'll have this back on for discussion April 18th. Have more information for you then.
There are not many of us to do it, then.
Um, I think she's been attending some classes with the state, and, I mean, she's obtaining more information, so we can work with her.
But our decision won't be to approve that particular installation. It will be whether, what level of governance we need over these type of installations in the future.
Yes, yes.
But this is the test case.
Yes, and so, depending on what those decisions are, it might not be allowed. She might have to go through a specific use process, or we have that S1 process that we require for personal care facilities, and so maybe it's that, you know, that we require her to go through.
Because although this one is for children, it could be a, a much broader group of, a group home.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions for this discussion? Marcus? Okay, thank you very much for-
Interesting.
For at least alerting us where we're, where we may be going on this. Our next item is consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning commission meeting dates. Aubrey, you want to lead us through this too?
Yes, sir. So we have, on Monday, April 1st, we have the joint public hearing with city council to change our public hearing process. That public hearing is going to be at 6:00 PM instead of our regular 7:00 PM. So I don't think we voted yet to change our April 4th meeting to the 1st. So if we want to consider a vote to change that meeting, and then our second regular meeting in April is the 18th.
Do we see much activity for the next meeting? Is there a lot of stuff out there?
Um, we have two final Platts, and then that, that ordinance change, so.
So we need a motion to move our April 4th meeting to April 1st?
Yes.
I so moved to move our regular meeting on April 4th, 2019, to April 1st, 2019.
And that one I second. Is there any discussion about moving our mo, meeting?
You do know that's April Fool's Day.
Yes, yes. But votes still count on that day.
And it would be at 6, 6:00 PM, yes. I know that's this.
So, all in favor of canceling the April 4th meeting and just covering everything on the 1st? It's unanimous? And so, communications. We start with commissioners, suggestions for future addenda items, general topics, updates from liaison assignments. I'll start with you, Marcus. Anything to share in any liaison stuff? Any updates?
No, no, I don't have any.
Lisa?
No, I have not had another meeting yet.
Okay. Dick?
No, sir.
Brett?
Yep.
Joe?
I wanted to thank you for taking care of the meeting tonight, preparing, doing all the preparation. Thank you very much.
I thought you'd have a British accent when you came back. Okay, so updates from the subcommittees, that's ordinance subcommittee. I will get with you after the meeting, and we'll talk about how much guidance you might need from us with regard to the issue that you're working on and when we need to have our next one. I think it'd be nice to take a little breath because we've been having nonstop meetings on many issues, but this ordinance thing needs to be covered, so I'll, I'll talk to you offline on that.
Okay.
Planning subcommittee update. Brett, anything?
Uh, planning subcommittee is on hiatus until further notice.
Downtown district subcommittee update. Go.
I would say we're in the same mode right now.
I think we're done.
I think we're done, but I'm not willing to say that just yet.
Okay, okay. Council liaison, Sally. We have two council members today. We are very fortunate.
I feel special.
Ooh, I do, we do feel very special.
I would like to introduce my cohort in crime, Robert Grefon.
Glad to have you.
No, I, I know this represents an awful lot of work, and I know I say this every month, but, or every other month, whatever. Y'all really do work really, really hard, and I appreciate the job that you do, and I appreciate the recommendations that you bring to council, and I love that we're, I think we're about to have our last joint public hearing, so that council will have a chance to understand if we see a 5-2 vote or a 4-3 vote, we understand what was behind that. So thank y'all so much for pushing forward on that one. I really do appreciate it, and I'm especially excited about the downtown committee, but you know. Thank y'all.
Thanks, Sally. And then staff, anything you want to share, anything special coming up that we haven't talked about already?
The February 2019 DRC report was emailed with your backup material. Our DRCs have been pretty skinny lately. I don't think we had any in January, so we didn't, you didn't get a report for that month. And then the other item was the city email accounts. There was an inquiry about that previously, and I did talk to our IT department. There is an option for you to get a city issued email address if you would like that. So if you want that, let me know. We can get that set up. There's no issue. It'd just be another account for you to keep up with. I think the passwords for the account change every three months, and so you might have to come in to, well, you're on the computers here in the evening, so you can update your password when you're here, but that is an option, so let me know.
And apparently there is precedent. That's, that's done, people in PZ have had those in the past.
Yes.
So, some people like to have them, some people don't, and so I guess the plan is to get with you offline, and if you want one, you can sure have one.
Yes.
Anything else? Becky? Aubrey? Mary Kay, anything? Okay. Well then, I guess we are ready to adjourn. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.